Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth White Marsh High School distinguished graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting of the Colonial School Board of Directors, August 17th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this evening, I would like to, on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome Dr. Michael Christian to the school district and to his first meeting as superintendent. Dr. Christian was administered the oath of office earlier this evening, and we are very pleased to have him with us and leading our district, we hope, for years to come if we behave well. Following the meeting, we'll have a small reception for Dr. Christian, and everyone's invited to stay. I'd also like to announce that we, the board met in executive session on June 22nd for 30 minutes, June 28th for 30 minutes, July 27th for 30 minutes, and prior to this meeting for about an hour. Topics discussed were the open seat on the board, confidential legal issues with regards to personnel and staffing needs as we get ready for the new school year. Oh, yeah. Geez, I just, I'd also like to welcome Gary Johnson back to the board for a short stay. Gary was chosen to fill in for Alan Tobachnick when he left the area, and so Gary will be here until the December meeting.
Thank you, it's nice to be back.
Yeah, but you're not used to sitting over there.
No.
I would like to ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of the FMT Committee Meeting of June 8th, Curriculum Meeting of June 12th, the regular meeting of June 15th, Special Meeting of June 22nd, Special Meeting of June 28th, and the FMT Committee Meeting of June 22nd. Those are enclosures 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 31. We are not going to approve the FMT Committee Meeting minutes from July 27th this evening.
Now, we'll do that next month, and we'll, just one correction, and we'll get it up on the website.
We have a correction to be made, so we'll have it up on the website shortly with that correction, and then we'll approve it at our next meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Is there a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor? I would like to ask for a motion to approve the financial reports, the budget transfers from June and July, general fund and federal program bills from June and July, capital reserve fund bills, June and July, food service bills, cafeteria report, June and July, and the outstanding investment report from June and July, and the cash flow summary. Well, these are all from June and July, so I'll stop saying it. Comparison of taxes collected, real estate tax escrow report, trust fund report, reconciliation of cash accounts, budgetary deficit status report, bond report, and the treasures report, all from June and July. And is there a motion to approve? Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? This is the time we reserve for public comments on items on tonight's agenda. Does anyone want to speak? Okay, staff report. That's you.
Next item on the agenda?
Turn on his microphone.
There we go. For the board's approval tonight, we have action items for professional employees and support employees, as well as extra duty and extra pay officials. Prior to that, we will have Dr. McKenney discuss progress towards opening of school. Liz?
We'll talk about our summer programs. This summer, we ran seven programs. We ran our elementary literacy summer program for our kindergarten through sixth grade students. We also, for the seventh year, ran our girls in technology program. Courses in programming, robotics, engineering, and art were offered to girls entering fifth through eighth grade. And we want to thank, again, Quaker Chemical, who provided grant money to make the program more affordable to girls attending. We also ran, again, I think this is our fourth year, for three summer music programs. We offered Sing Fest, which is a choir music camp for students entering grades first through six. We actually had 85 students, that keeps growing that number each year, so that was great attendance there. As part of Sing Fest, we also had 14 students in grades seven through 12 who were counselors and helped support that program, so that was really exciting. We ran the String Fest program, which included students entering grades five through eight, and offered experiences in music composition and string theory. We also, our third music program was Summer Music Instruction, and that was offered to students who are currently enrolled in the Colonial School District's music program in grades four through 12, and students worked on improving and strengthening their general music skills in that program. We also, this year, offered two federally-funded or Title I programs. We had Camp Concha Hockin, where students engaged in activities that fostered physical fitness, critical thinking, problem solving, and collaboration, while also integrating math, reading, and social skills into that program, very successful. They had a lot of fun there. We also offered a second Title I program, a summer program, that was Plymouth Elementary Summer Camp. That was really an intense educational program designed to meet individual student needs in areas of reading and mathematics. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McKenney. We also have Mr. Terry Yem here. Got to push that forward. Thank you, Dr. McKenney. We also have Terry Yem here, Director of Operations, to provide an update for the board and the community on the renovation projects that are taking place. Terry?
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Well, good evening. My pleasure tonight to give you an update, excuse me, on the renovation projects that we have going on currently in the district. You may remember back in the fall, or actually in the winter, we were asked to take a look at doing work at WE, White Marsh Elementary, Ridge Park Elementary, and Plymouth Elementary. And all three of those were awarded back in, I'm going to say, in the wintertime, which it was January, February, and that the task that we were tasked with is making sure that the projects were up and running, ready for school, on September 5th, 2017, or 18? No, 2017. So, we've been busy. We've got a lot of work done over the last couple of months. I don't know if you've been to the schools, but you can see there's a lot of work going on right now. So, again, it's my pleasure to give you an update on that tonight. We broke ground in March and April at Plymouth Elementary and Ridge Park Elementary, and both of those schools included four, the installation or construction of four classrooms at each, and then the renovation, the interior renovations, which we'll go over in a second. And the majority of pictures that you're going to see tonight were actually taken this morning at the sites. So, they're fresh, they're up-to-date report. So, Plymouth Elementary... Plymouth Elementary School, as I mentioned, it has four new classrooms. We also installed air conditioning throughout the entire building, new heating system, building was fully sprinklered, new drop ceilings in all classrooms, drop ceilings in corridors, elevator was installed, carpeting in corridors, gymnasium multipurpose room was expanded, and the corridors were painted, new state-of-the-art energy-efficient lights in classrooms and corridors. That's actually a picture of the addition from the Red Row inside of the building, which is behind the building. One of the things that the board has been very helpful with through us through the years is allowing us to build additions that look identical to the existing structure. There's nothing that I hate more than looking at an addition, you can say, geez, it's an addition, it was built at a different time period, but the board's been very good with giving us the capital that we need to make sure it looks like, it looks like it's been there for years. So, again, that's four classrooms, two on top of two, double deck. The next slide is a view of the new addition from the playground. Next slide is the addition view from Plymouth Road. There's an elevator that was installed, that's right to get people from, obviously, from one floor to the other, but that's right at the new addition as well. That was a part of the ADA code, we were actually required to do that by the township. Classroom on second floor, we're pretty far along, I mean, when you walk into the school right now, you would think to yourself, oh, my gosh, there's no way in the world we're ever going to make it for September 5th. But a lot of the classrooms are almost completed, there's punch list items that need to be done in a lot of the classrooms. This is one of them that is almost completed, but again, with the exception of some punch list items. This is a classroom in the new addition, you can see that there's no ceiling in yet, the walls are up, the windows are in, but there's a lot of work yet to do in that project. The same contractor, the same general contractor that's working on Plymouth Elementary is doing Ridge Park Elementary as well. His exit strategy is to get the classrooms done first, meaning the ones that were existing in the corridors first, and then work his way out of the new addition. So, the new addition, which is the four classrooms, will be done last, which is next week. But he's got a pretty good head start on it. When you look at it, you think there's a lot of work, and there is, but they'll pull it off. The corridor on the second floor, ceiling grid is installed, and I'm going to, you're going to hear me say "ceiling grid installed" quite a few times because that's critical. One of the things I've heard from every job meeting over the last couple of weeks is, when is the ceiling going to be in? When is the ceiling going to be in? Because that's the key to a lot of trades. Electrician can't put the lights in until the ceiling grid is in. The plumber can't put the sprinkler lines in until the ceiling grid is in. The fire detection system can't be installed till the ceiling grid. So, a lot is hinging on that, and we're pretty close to having the ceiling grid in all the corridors and throughout all the schools as of this week, where it should be almost close, oh, close to 100 percent. Corridor first floor, again, we're still at Plymouth Elementary. Flooring is complete, ceiling approximately 75 percent complete. And still another picture of the first floor as well. We did put carpeting on the floor, for those of you who know Plymouth Elementary, it was always with a gray tile, nine-by-nine tiles. It's now going to be carpet, which is nice, it's really attractive. The architects did a nice job of picking the colors. This is the classroom in the new addition, again, it needs a ceiling yet, and needs to be finished off. The media center, for those of you that knew Plymouth Elementary, there was a concrete staircase that was in the media center. That was removed during the summer, during this past month, and unfortunately, there's a lot of tables and shelves on the left-hand side, but when you look at that room now compared to what it was before, it's incredible how much larger that looks. So, it's going to be real functional for the students now. Corridor first floor, ceiling grid installed. And now we go to Ridge Park Elementary School. Almost identical tasks that we had at Ridge Park as we had at Plymouth Elementary. The only difference is that where we expanded the gymnasium to make it a larger area, at Plymouth Elementary, we actually backed the stage, we cut some of them, moved the stage back about 30 feet. Here, what we did, we took the wall down that separates the cafeteria from the gymnasium. So, now it's all one large room, so they're going to be able to use that for third-grade concerts. If you've ever been there for a third-grade concert, they're standing room only. So, now there'll be a bit of seating for everyone. The new addition from the rear of this, that's a view from the rear of the school, you'll see, I'll talk to you about the sidewalk in a second. There's a sidewalk leading from Linda Drive to the rear of the school. This was a requirement by the township. They wanted us to build a sidewalk that took the students from, I guess walkers, from the Linda Drive area to the back of the school. One of the concerns we had with that is that who's going to maintain the sidewalk? We have no trouble taking care of what's on our property, but how do we enforce the homeowners that are going to, that's in front of their home, how are we going to make sure that they're going to clear the sidewalk in the winter with ice, with snow? And that, fortunately, township's going to handle that for us, so they're going to have agreements in the homeowners' package so that they have to take care of it. So, hopefully, we won't have a problem with that because that'll end up falling on us eventually. So, I want to make sure our students are safe walking the school. That's the view looking up towards Linda Drive. Again, that's the remainder of the sidewalk. The access lane, when we were negotiating this contract, or trying to get the approvals, the fire marshal wanted us to put an access road completely around the building, 360 degrees. Would have cost us close to $500,000 for that. We were able to successfully negotiate just access lane only going from the main drive where the students get dropped off to the playground. So, it's about one-tenth the amount of space that was originally requested. So, we were pretty pleased with that. Corridor leading from lobby to all-day kindergarten, again, you see ceiling grid being installed. This is one of the classrooms, it's approximately 90 percent complete at Ridge Park. Another one, 90 percent complete. Actually, there's 13 classrooms that we're going to go in this weekend and take care of with our own custodial crew, the cleaning. So, they, once they're clean, we're going to lock the door up, and nobody else can get in there, and that'll be ready for day one of school. So, this is a classroom in the new addition, the casework's already installed. Again, this is Ridge Park, needs a ceiling, this is, again, in new addition. Another classroom in the new addition. Another classroom, new addition, all same process. Classroom in a new addition, ceilings to be installed, drywall and painting to be completed, flooring to be installed. Go over to White Marsh Elementary. Actually, let me back up a second. White Marsh Elementary had almost the same tasks that the other two schools, with the exception of, no, we did not install any, or construct any new classrooms at White Marsh Elementary. So, that was really the only difference, other than that it did get all brand-new air conditioning, new heating system, drop ceilings in all the corridors, energy-efficient lights in all the classrooms, and we did put in new drop ceilings throughout. Classroom on the north end, this is actually complete with a few punch list items. The whole left side of the school actually is complete. The custodial supervisor is bringing in a crew this weekend to actually do another 10 rooms, so he'll be up to 20 rooms that are complete, and again, locked up and ready to go for September 5th. Classroom on north end, complete with a few punch list items, same as the last slide, same thing here with a little bit of drywall and painting, they're going to work, if you picture the school from Joshua, they're working from the left-hand side of the school, finishing it complete, and then working down to the right to the all-day kindergarten project, or wing, and then working out of the building. So, that's going along very well. Classroom on south side, you can see they're still in the drywall and painting stage, but that actually probably was completed today, they were in the process of doing that when I was taking pictures. Same thing here with this classroom on the south side. This is a classroom in the all-day kindergarten wing. I was asked a question today about air conditioning in the all-day kindergarten wing. You may or may not be aware that when we built that, what, back in 2004, we were, we did put in air conditioning capabilities, so we were able to do, use, what we had put in back in '04, we're finally able to use it now, and you actually didn't see, you'll see that there's no separate unit ventilator in the all-day kindergarten wing because it all was up on the rooftop. So, again, that was installed back in '04. Corridor leading from lobby to south side, again, ceiling grids, ceiling grids as well. Plymouth White Marsh High School, we're actually in the final phase of the major renovation that started several years ago. I'm not going to go through all the list, I think most of you have seen the high school. Again, we're down to the final phase. This is Phase 7 and Phase 8 have been combined. Flooring and ceiling tile to be installed in that corridor. This is a corridor where they've already installed the flooring, and ceiling is completed. Corridor is ready for flooring, ceiling grid, and to be installed. And west end boys restroom is ready to go, they have to put up the partitions yet, but we're ready to go with that as well. West end classroom, ceiling grid in place, light installed and flooring installed, and that's pretty much the condition of 13 classrooms that will be finished before September 5th. Actually, they'll be completed by the end of next week. So, we're in really good shape with that as well. And last but not least, we're starting the west gym, final farewell. Remember, that picture a couple of weeks ago would have had the west gym in it, but it's actually completely demolished now, with the exception of some footings, but it's an interesting view. If you get the opportunity to go down and take a look at that, it's interesting to watch. So, that's the end of my report for this evening. We will be on time for all the schools, I know that's one of the questions, again, we were tasked for September 5th. It'll be tight, we're going to be working a lot of overtime hours, a lot of evening hours, but it will be completed before an up-and-running for school opening. I'm sorry, I should have told you that, I'm glad you brought that up. The lobby will be open, but the front of the school, where you're talking about outside, where the brick and the, that will not be completed for school opening. That will probably be two to three weeks later, so in the middle of September to third week of September, you're going to see that open up, the front of the building. No, we're actually going to, we'll talk about that a little bit later with a route that we're going to use for dropping off students. But one other thing I'd just like to point out, I wanted to actually commend the efforts of Joe LaLanne. Joe's not here tonight, Joe is actually enjoying himself down in Jamaica, his daughter got married, a destination wedding, but Joe has been phenomenal with this project. This project, these projects would not be where they are today without Joe LaLanne. So, I would say, we, he got his promotion, I guess that was back a year, almost a year ago now? I think the return on investment with Joe LaLanne has already paid itself off, so I commend Joe, he's done a great job. Any other questions?
No. Terry, we have to thank you as well. I know this has been a very long haul, and you've done a ton of work, and please extend our thanks to Joe and your whole group as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Correspondence, Gary.
Karen Burke seeks board acceptance of a grant in the amount of $3,500 from Chester County Regional Education Services. The funds will be used to provide staff training in the area of suicide prevention. That's enclosure 19.
Is there a motion? That's a motion? Is there a second? Any questions? All in favor? Okay, superintendent's report. You can do them all at once.
Good. Thank you. We're seeking in enclosures 20, 21, and 22, board action is requested regarding the enclosed personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfers are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, state-manded requirements. There's also extra duty and extra pay for fall and annual clubs, as well as adult evening school for the fall of 2017. Some of the highlights in the personnel report, including the hiring of our new athletic director, Ralph Brettz. Ralph is completing his work in his present district, should be joining us in the middle of September, certainly wish Charlie Forrest are all the best in his retirement in the interim. Mike Isgona, the high school assistant principal, will be helping fulfill those duties to cover any gaps that may exist. Also on the agenda, she has already started, Eileen Carr, our new principal at Ridge Park, and she's excited to get started here in Colonials, as am I.
Motion to approve the superintendent's report. Any comments or questions?
Jackson, Business Administrator, thank you. In conjunction with Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, submits the following transportation contracts for board action. A is St. Joseph's Preparatory School, $8.68 per student, per day. Note, the 2016-2017 rate was $8.46 per day, per student, per day. That's enclosure 23. Second one, and B is parent contract, 0.53.5 per mile for the established IRS rate for each day the parent transports said pupil, and that's enclosure 32. Seeking approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Felix? All in favor? Thank you. Leslie?
Yes, thank you. Karen Burke, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education, seeks board approval of contracts for the 2017-18 school year for Camp Hill Special School, tuition's $41,580, and one-to-one services, $36,900. That's enclosure 24. And Pathway School, the tuition is $49,500, these are annual tuitions. And that's enclosure 25. That's a motion to accept those two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Leslie or Mrs. Burke? All in favor?
Number three.
Mel, can you do number three, please?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with your cabinet committee unit to conduct this research. It was a very long process, and they were wonderful, and we've been with the wonderful superintendent. So, that is a motion.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor? Felix?
Trevor Jackson, Business Administrator, seeks board authorization for vendors resulting from a collection bidding process for groceries, milk, juice, and ice cream. Enclosure 27.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Leslie, placement agreements.
Yes, Karen Burke, again, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education, seeks board approval for three placement agreements. That's for three students in lieu of FAP. Due to restrictions regarding student confidentiality and privacy, these agreements were reviewed in executive session. That is a motion to accept those placements.
Is there a second? Questions? All in favor? Kathy?
Proposed revisions to Board Policy Number 233, suspension and expulsion, are being provided on a second-read basis for board approval, and that's enclosure number 28, and that's a motion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this policy? All in favor? Mel?
Yeah, I'm about to make a motion to approve a couple of contracts, one with our cabinet members, and one with our CASIA members. And I'd just like to say before I make the motion that my mic was off. I'd like to say that these negotiations, discussions, not negotiations, discussions were held without ranker or acrimony, there were give and take, and ultimately, we both agreed that it was a very fair agreement for everyone involved, and the agreements give us labor peace, which we extended with the teachers' legislature, and now with the administrators, so we have labor harmony until 2022. That being said, motion to approve the, ooh, I skipped around.
You did, that's okay.
Okay, I'll come back. Approval is sought for the cabinet-level administrators' compensation plan between the Colonial Board of School Directors and the cabinet-level administrators effective July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2022. That is a motion.
Second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Approval is sought for the Colonial Administrators and Supervisors Education Association Plan, CASIA, between the Colonial Board of School Directors and the Colonial Administrators and Supervisors Education Association Plan, effective July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2022, and that is a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
I would also like to make a motion to approve the grievance settlement agreement with respect to grievance number 16 between the Colonial School District and the Colonial Education Support Professionals. Obviously, this is a confidential issue.
Is there a second? Questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Mel. Beth?
Trevor Jackson, excuse me, Business Administrator, requests approval of, this is so exciting, PlanCon H documents for GOB Series A of 2017 for Ridge Park Elementary and Plymouth Elementary Schools. Board approval is requested for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and Trevor, do you want to talk a little bit about PlanCon and how exciting that document is?
Sure. There are many phases to PlanCon, however, PlanCon H is all about project financing. The board has seen these documents in the past as they relate to every bond issue that we've taken out over the course of these projects that Mr. Yem alluded to earlier in a meeting. So, PlanCon H is all about project financing. There will be final financing once we get through the final accounting of the projects later on in the PlanCon process, but we have already received one check in the amount of $101,599 from one of our first bond issues that we took out on this project a few years ago. So, we are starting to see some dividends from all this work that Mr. Yem and architects have put forward.
So, that is reimbursement for money we spent at the high school?
Correct.
Great.
It's worth the work, and we didn't think it would be, we weren't sure.
We didn't think we'd get any money.
Right, yeah.
Great. Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gary?
Trevor Jackson, Business Administrator, requests approval of the advertising agreement with First Trust for sponsorship of the new baseball field, enclosure 33. That's a motion.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments? I guess we should, Mr. Jackson, do you want to explain what this is?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Moore. This is sponsorship for the new baseball field that's currently being constructed right outside. This was, been a very, I'll say, easy agreement to put together with our solicitor reviewing it, and their solicitor reviewing it. First Trust has been a terrific First Trust has been a terrific partner with the district, starting just a few months ago, with sponsoring our STEAM program, and now with sponsoring our new baseball stadium. So they're very excited about this, we're equally excited about this. Certainly would like to acknowledge Denise Marks, who was certainly intricate to getting this deal done, and, but it's been a very, very smooth, healthy, and borderline fun process to work with them at this time.
And my understanding is that First Trust is, hopefully this will be a, a long-term partnership between Colonial School District and First Trust. We already have two pieces to that, being the STEAM initiative that they're, they're funding, and the baseball field, and hopefully there will be more. So, thank you Denise, thank you Mr. Jackson. Is there a second to that mo, do we already did a second? We already, okay, we already vote, did we already vote?
No.
No, sorry.
See what happens when we skip a month.
I'm still down the shore, you know? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Solicitors' report.
The Colonial School District has been involved in an on-again, off-again relationship with Chestnut Hill College with respect to the development of Victory Field Number One. After an extensive amount of negotiations led by Business Manager Trevor Jackson, the Board of School Directors is in receipt of a new license agreement for the use of Victory Field Number One. Because this item was not on the agenda this evening, there will be an opportunity for public comment immediately after the motion is made and seconded after the resolution is framed by myself. And I will be asking that the Board of School Directors approve the 2017 license agreement for Victory Field Number One between the Colonial School District and Chestnut Hill College, effective through August 31st, 2027, subject to solicitor and administration's approval on the final wording of the license agreement and documentation. Will need a motion and second to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Comments or questions? We also now, anybody in the public who would like to comment or ask any question, comment on this issue, can do so now?
Sue had a question.
Yes.
In regards to this paying the districts, we were out, how much money in regards to the 2015 agreement?
It was approximately $217,000, $70,000, am I correct?
I think we need to be clear as to what that agreement was. That agreement was for develop, engineering and development of the baseball field. You want to explain that?
Yes, that was for the development of the baseball field and, at the time, Victory Field Number Two, to re-turf that, that grass field.
Right. And Victory Field Number Two was withdrawn because of county, change, changes in the county flood plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Stormwater management ordinances.
So with that withdrawn, how much money was involved?
$250,000. $250,840.
More or less? Okay.
And as part of this agreement, Chestnut Hill, this original agreement, Chestnut Hill was going to reimburse us for that out-of-pocket expenses?
Correct.
From my understanding, they don't believe they owe this money? Is that correct?
Yeah, is this legal? Is this something we, yeah?
I mean, I, I think you can say, it's my understanding that there is a dispute between the parties as to the return of those dollars to the school district, which resulted in further negotiations with the parties that resulted in this multiple-year agreement for utilization of the properties where those dollars will be recaptured over time.
Okay, that's fair enough.
It's, it's my understanding the recapture will occur over the first, after the first year, recapture would be complete.
More or less, yes.
So although we might not receive all the money that we put out of pocket, this is probably the best deal that we're going to get on the table at this time? Is that a fair assessment?
I don't know if it's my role to make a fair assessment of that, that's ultimately the board's role, but the board in discussing this particular issue came to that, I think, conclusion, at least preliminarily in executive session, and our administration, through Mr. Jackson, there is recommending this from a financial perspective from the board because we will end up, in the long run, making more dollars this way than trying to recoup the $270,000 due and owing the district.
So I would like to say that I see this as a very positive agreement because our students, it's a win-win situation, where our high school students will be able to use a beautiful baseball field, and they will get dedicated time from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m.
On the soccer field?
On the soccer. The baseball field?
Soccer.
The soccer field, okay. Excuse me. Victory Field.
The baseball field is completely ours, Chestnut Hill has nothing to do with it.
Right.
Which is positive. And we've increased the hours that PW kids can use our fields.
Exclusively.
Exclusively from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. every day.
Mm-hmm. So, and we make our money back in a year. Yep.
So although we're not getting all of the money back that we thought was owed to us, sometimes compromises don't make anybody happy.
So owed to us, it would have been them paying entirely for the field. Now we have some skin in the game, right? Paying for it?
They're still paying entirely for the field, we are out some of the money on the baseball field, their contention is, we build it anyway and we're going to use it anyway, so they don't owe us the money for building it, and that was the disagreement that we've had and that Trevor has been negotiating for quite some time now. So this, in, in Trevor's view, the administration's view, and those people in the board that were involved, is the best deal that we, we felt we could get, and certainly the district gets back the money that it's going to cost to turf that field, to re-turf the field. So.
Yeah, I would characterize that as corrected, the agreement, although there is some loss, the long-term benefit.
Yes, correct.
Is there?
Yep. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? So we have a motion and a second, is there anything else we need to do except vote?
You need to vote.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
That concludes my report, my rare, one of my rare reports.
It was a good one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, committee reports, Leslie, intermediate unit.
Yes, thank you, Sue. The Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met last on June 28th in the Norristown Building. At that time Colonial, as well as many other districts in the county, entered into agreements with the MCIAU for various educational services to start the fiscal new year. CST contracted with the MCIAU to provide professional development with our teachers on Google Suite for Education. Colonial also entered into an agreement with the MCIAU to participate in their virtual high school consortium from June 2017 until July 2018. This annual membership of $7,000 allows us to enroll some of our students in online courses and programs. Executive Director Dr. John George expressed appreciation for the great support from school districts throughout the county to help expand their VHS program. Colonial will also be availing itself of discovery education streaming through the MCIAU for a cost of $4,708, E-Rate Services, which is a federal program for discounted internet, for $6,000, and other internet services for about $22,400. It's an annual fees. All of these fees cover the period from July 2017 through July, June 2018. Power Schools also leased through the MCIAU for our entire district for $23,807 for the year. And Montage, we get for $4,900 for that same time period. Dr. John George stated that contracted services has been an area of growth for MCIAU and we are taking advantage of many of those. Finally, the Colonial School District will be utilizing shared special education services offered by the MCIAU and itinerant staff in the areas of vision, hearing, and behavioral support. The cost is $1,042,201 for these services, and allows, also allows for classroom placement for some of our special education students outside of the school. The MCIAU Board's next public meeting is next week on August 23rd, and that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mel?
Yes, as I announced in June, the Assistant Director of the Tech School resigned effective June 30th, and Mr. Slough, who's the Director, announced that he will be retiring at the end of this coming school year. So a search was conducted, a lot of very qualified people applied, and interviews held, and last week, we approved the hiring of a gentleman named Seth Schramm, who ironically started his career as a teacher at Central Monco Tech School, then worked his way up to becoming a Director of Tech Schools in Chester County, and he has some very interesting ideas how to make the tech school more, even more attractive than it currently is for our students. So we look forward to his coming in as a Director, he'll start as Assistant Director, by the end of the year he will be Director, and we will be having another search for Assistant Director.
Great, thank you.
That is all.
Keep your microphone on. Mel, HR?
No report.
Felix, finance?
No report.
Curriculum, Leslie?
No report.
Facilities, Beth?
Yeah, well, I think Terry's presentation pretty much covered just about everything that he's been doing all summer. But just as a reminder, we were talking about Plymouth White Marsh in the front of the school, that will not be available for students to enter that way, or for anybody to enter that way, for two to three weeks, we'll say October 1st, just to make it safe. So for all kids showing up and parents, the drop-off will remain the same as it did at the end of the year. When did we start that? Like, spring last year?
It starts April, in April, November, April, June.
Okay, so same traffic, same drop-off, pickup, drop-off pattern. Parking for students is the same as last year, has that changed at all? Okay, so that's the same. Are we sending anything out to freshman parents to let them know? We should probably do that. Trevor? Trevor?
I'm sorry.
Just thinking about that, incoming freshmen, those parents won't know the, the drop-off plan? I don't know if we've.
That's not Trevor.
Oh.
Well, Dr. [inaudible].
Okay, have we done that? Okay. Something, we just need to do that. The turf is down, will be completed this week on the field, on the stadium. We have a beautiful Colonial's sign at the, at the end, yes, and we'll be doing the track next, and two to three weeks before that's open and available to the public. Okay? And the baseball field is off and running, and when do we think that will be completed?
Actually, that should be completed in, well, probably the first week of October.
All right, so October's a big month for PW, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can we need a few relations, Kathy? He's not here, is there anything we need to do? Mrs. Burke?
What about the, in October, we're having.
We are.
An event.
Mr. Sherman, would you like to speak to that? Ah, Mrs. Marks, would you like to come up and speak to that?
There's a microphone right there.
You can go to that one over there.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Denise Marks. On October 7th, we are holding Foundation Day as a way to really relaunch the Colonial School District Education Foundation to the community. From 12 to 6, we're going to have a craft fair in the cafeteria, there'll be food trucks in the front parking lot. Our Honor Society is going to kick off tours of what has been renovated after we hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We are right now in the process of gaining sponsors who want to support our event, and the purpose of the day is really to promote to the school district who the foundation is, what we are, and what we're raising money for to support our students. So we're excited about the day, it's well underway, our plans are really coming together, and we've already secured a terrific list of sponsors.
Great, thank you. Legislature, he's not here, anything from municipalities? Are there any questions or comments from the floor of a general nature?
Good evening, Greg Stokes here with Colonial Community Aquatics. I'm here tonight with Wendy Davis, Chrissy Sullivan, Terry Golbetsky, and Nina Smith. We just wanted to welcome the new superintendent to Colonial, and we look forward to working with you for many years to come. Thank you.
Any other comments from, from the audience? Hey, any other comments or questions from the board or the administration? Mr. Sherman, I forgot you.
It's all right, for the record, we need to report that the district is in receipt of PDE approval for Plan Cons Section F and Section I with regards to the high school, and they have to deal with the addition of the west gymnasium. And as we are required to do, we will include those approvals in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, you don't need any motions or anything? No. Okay, anything else from the administration? Board? Okay, seeing none, the meeting's adjourned.